Help us more, we have your wisdom as we do. Help us to work together as planners and staff and community to do your will in this area and we know that we will be perfect. These things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If you join me in the renewal to the pledge to our great republic, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A little call please.
Commissioners Larry Burkey?
Yep.
Jonathan Irvin?
Here.
Dana Haycock?
Here.
Dan Jacobs?
Here.
Brad Malley?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chairman Bose?
Yeah.
We have a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Any person who would like to address the planning commission is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the council chambers and here in the front as well. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each in this first. No. All right. The purpose of tonight's meeting, the planning commission will review an addendum to the draft general plan policy document, continuing to review staff's recommendation of the general plan land use map and continue formulation of its ultimate recommendation for the general plan update program. And we have presentation from staff, a number of items. So, Mr. Ludicki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to turn it over to Dave Ledbetter, who will take you through the presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you mentioned, staff has outlined a couple of objectives that we would like you to entertain for tonight's meeting. One of those would be to resolve any remaining issues regarding the land use map and allow formulation of the planning commission land use recommendation. And then also discuss the March 23 addendum to the June policy, draft policy document that was submitted to you on March 23rd and resolve any remaining concerns regarding the draft policy document. If the commission is able to accomplish those two objectives tonight, then it's the goal of staff that at the next public hearing, whenever determined that is going to be, we would be able to bring to you all the necessary documents to entertain a recommendation on the general plan program at that particular meeting. And they were to discuss a possible date later on in the meeting. So what I thought I'd do, there's several new information items that we've presented to you tonight, as well as some updated items that go under the tabs of your binder.
Please proceed then.
What we do is just go through those and discuss some of those in detail because I know some of those contain some of the remaining issues that we've been addressing the past several special meetings. And then, once I finish, I'll just turn it back to you and you can then take it and discuss any of those items that you'd like to. First of all, I just wanted to point out that staff at the commission's request has distributed a copy of the presentation that was given on March 23rd that compares the GPAC preferred plan and staff's recommendation that looks like this. And attached to that is a couple of tables, one of them that we presented on the 23rd and there were a couple of areas that we've corrected in that table. And you'd also requested a comparison between the staff recommendation and the adopted land use map, the current adopted land use map. So we've also created a table that gives you that information for your perusal.
Before you jump to the next one. It's not numbered, but it's called West Side. A map called West Side.
Yes.
I believe it was the consensus at last meeting at the southeast, check that southwest corner of 70th, Weston Key remained non-urban.
Yeah, this, let me just clarify regarding, this is the exact presentation that we gave you on the 23rd and you had requested, commission had requested that we give you a copy of this, so that's all we're doing here.
Oh, okay.
We'll go into, yeah, we'll go into the planning commission modifications that were made at the March 23rd meeting. It will show that that has been taken off. But this is just that same graphic that was presented to you on the 23rd.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna skip down to, I'll get back to some of the other materials that are listed on the list, the itemized list that we gave you, but they really pertain to the tabs anyway, so I've kind of blended those in. On the tab one, there's no new materials that we're presenting tonight to you. Tab number two, which is the addendum to the land use alternatives, this is the thing that we gave a couple of meetings back that contains various corrections to the map, including additional school sites and so forth.
Tab three.
Tab three? Tab three. My tabs are off here, so apologize.
Could well be mine are, I mean, who knows?
What I'll do is I'll just call out the name of the document.
All right, thanks Dave.
In that way, we'll, hopefully no confusion. This is the addendum to the land use alternatives. It's the thing that's up there on the screen that we presented to you a couple of meetings back and just contains various corrections, school sites that were inadvertently left off the map, and other corrections. We have further corrections to add to that and I wanted to address those tonight specifically. A couple of these were given to you last week. We have a couple more that came online today, so I want to go through these one at a time. And I'll actually have some graphics up there on the screen. Whoop, wrong thing. I don't have my deal here.
I never know where it says name or the net box.
That's supposed to be you. Correct. Here we go. Additional school site within the Lancaster school district at Lancaster, future Lancaster Boulevard, just east of 50th Street West. We've added that in. That's a future school site, Lancaster school district. And then a, another Lancaster school district site located at what would be 35th Street West and I believe Avenue I-4, I think it would be the southwest corner of that intersection. It's another property that wasn't on the map, so we want to add that to the recommendation. And then this graphic, and Brian may have to jump in a little bit here and fill in the details, but this was brought down to us by redevelopment today and this really is the property, the old fairgrounds that is located over on Division and Avenue I. And a number of years ago, we brought before you a, the planning commission, a recommendation for modifications in this area reflecting some of the recreational components, the college site, the commercial designation, and also the school site on the northern portion of the property. And there has been further modifications since then regarding this site. All of this property is currently, I believe, under agency control. And so they have, they're asking that we identify other sites or other changes within this area to reflect modifications that have occurred since the time that general plan amendment was carried out. So this is what this is doing. This is addition to that addendum that we're bringing forward to you.
So Dave, the purple, the green, whatever, orangish-red, the gray or buff and whatever that color is above the yellow, are the areas you're talking about? The single-family homes and Paiute Middle School are not agency property, right?
That's right. That's correct. So we're talking about the modifications would be bringing the open space designation down along here, adding in the office professional area in this portion, and extending the urban residential out around the school site. Those are the predominant changes. And then one more side, this is the Whit Carter Park area on the west side of Sierra Highway, just north of Avenue H-8. And the predominant change is being recommended by the redevelopment agency here is the extension or the addition of the multiple family designation in this area with the two park sites. I think this is about a 20 acre site, I'm not sure what the size of this one is. The idea being is that multiple family area develops, there would be connections between the two park sites and also connections via pathways between the park sites and the surrounding neighborhoods and the multiple family development.
So this is agency-owned property?
I believe that's my understanding, this is agency or it's agency-controlled property?
Yeah, combination of agency and city. Both of these two areas that we've just gone over, both the area around the former fairgrounds and this site that's on the screen have both been, or both had plans that have gone through what's called a vision planning process that's been conducted through the city's Department of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization. The planning department has had input in that. Both of these areas and the changes have been, are vision plans that have been reviewed by the city council at one of their meetings and they've concurred with the direction of those. The indication from the council was that they wanted actions to be taken that were necessary to continue that vision planning process and the implementation of those vision goals. So in both of these instances, the redevelopment agency and the Department of Neighborhood Revitalization have indicated a desire to make sure that the general plan as it moves forward reflects what has occurred on those vision planning efforts.
Thank you. Any questions, ma'am?
My question would be, where it says moderate density residential, can you, can you give me a mental picture of what is that?
Yes, what the, what the agency or Department of Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization is looking at in the long term is an ownership housing product that would probably be in the range of about eight to nine dwelling units to the acre. That is a little bit more than the single-family residential density, which tops out at around six and a half or so. What they're looking at is either a detached or attached townhouse ownership approach and the most appropriate designation to accommodate that would be the MR designation in the general plan. So that's, that's the approach. Once again, I think it's important to emphasize that the city has control of this property. It's not a situation where there's a private owner that's being handed that, if you will. So there is going to be future review and pretty extensive planning process on it.
Okay, with regard to what I, my tab three, but the document is under, my tab three is the addendum to the June 2008 draft Lancaster general plan policy document that we gave the commission. It's a revised version we gave you on the March 23rd. There are no further changes to the text of that tonight, even though that's on the table for discussion tonight. However, there is one other additional suggested modification that staff would like to add to this recommendation tonight, and that pertains to figure 1-3 within the policy document, which is the graphic that shows the boundaries of the urbanizing area. And I have it up here somewhere. Here we go. With the, with the direction that the recommendations are going in, staff feels that there's a need to modify some of those boundaries. And I want to point out there's actually two locations currently based on the review that we've done on the land use map so far where we would recommend changes to the boundaries of this diagram. One of them being along this area here, which is, would be, bear with me just a second here. Would be Avenue J.
The sections you call that out in the?
It would be, it's in the introduction of the policy document, it would be page I-9.
I-9.
Right, it's figure I, I-3, the urbanizing area.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so extending the boundary along Avenue J to Avenue?
Looks like I?
Yeah, right. Now from J, from Avenue J to K along what would be?
65th to 70th.
Yeah, 65th to 70th, so it's this area right here. This was a recommendation to modify this to urban residential, so we feel it should be included within the boundaries of the urbanizing area if that becomes the ultimate recommendation by the planning commission. And then the other change would be the area that is east of 15th Street East and south of K-4. It would be between?
South of K-8, west of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me, yeah, let me see this one. It'd be, it would be the area south of K-8 and west, excuse me, west of 15th Street East. So it's the area that we recommended modifying from non-urban residential to urban residential at the last meeting. Those would be the two modifications we're recommending to this diagram. Other than to clean up some of the, of the information that's contained within the boundaries, the light yellow areas that are shown are actually, actually go back to the time of the general plan citizens advisory committee meetings when we were showing the location of current proposed and approved projects. So we're recommending also just changing that to the yellow or the mustard color, which represents the urban residential business. So we're simplifying the graph and bringing the boundaries up to date. That's what we're recommending on this particular.
Thank you. Any questions, ma'am?
Was the property east of 15th Street East and south of K-8, was that the area that was in the no-fly zone and you decided it no longer had to be in the no-fly?
Right, another, yes, it was, exactly. It was an area where that at one point there was some indication that there was a noise conflict within that area. It was an area that was added to, or converted from urban residential to non-urban residential after the overflight study was completed. It was actually done under the 97 general plan, so it really wasn't something that was recommended under the original overflight study. It was being changed to non-urban, so that's why we're recommending that it could, you know, that it could go back to urban residential.
Anyone else?
And then moving to the planning commission, the matrix, planning commission comments regarding the draft general plan policy document, this is the graphic that looks like, or the table that looks like this, where we have been, we've been working on this for several special meetings. There were some areas of this document that had still staff comments pending and we wanted to go through those tonight and bring you our responses to those because we filled in all the blanks on this now. What I've done, what staff's done in this particular graphic is, we have made changes to it this time around, we've shown those in bold type. So any place where you see bold type, that's where we've changed, we've modified the document. What I did, I wasn't going to go through and itemize all the changes because some of them are slight, just they were either corrections, typos, so forth, but I did want to touch on the major issues with regard to this particular document. And the first of those would be item number 11, item number 11 on page three. And this item pertains to questions regarding the overflight area again, and that area that would be west of 15th Street East. West of, I think I've got, there's a, it's west of 15th Street East and south of Avenue K-4. West of 15th Street East and south of Avenue K-4, there's a typo in the document here. So that particular area, as you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we'd indicated that we were going to meet with the Air Force references from Plant 42 and get their reading on potential land use changes within that area, which is the overflight study area. Within your packet, there is a letter that we received from the Air Force following those meetings dated, I believe, March 31st. And based on the results of that letter, staff is recommending that no further changes be made within the overflight study area at this time. And that's what this is stating here in the document we have.
So the recommendation is to leave it as it currently is?
Yes, that's what staff's recommendation is, to leave it as it currently is. Outside of the one modification that was done. And then on item number 18 on page four, this was a comment regarding ensuring that Plant 42 and Edwards Air Force Base is referenced within the implemented, implementing actions of the policy document. And there were two specific actions that were called out, 16 specific action, 1621A and 1621B. 1621A is really speaking more towards private industry than it is to military operations. However, 1621B definitely does apply to military installations. So the way that we rewarded that, what we're suggesting as rewarding for that specific action is as follows. Monitor the labor force development and regulatory needs of the local aerospace, aerospace-related firms, existing industrial clusters and military installations, parentheses, Edwards Air Force Base and Air Force Plant 42, in order to assist in the retention and expansion. So that's what we're recommending as a modification to address that. And then item number 36, page 11. And this pertains to comments that we have received from the planning commission regarding policy 1814 and the related specific actions, 1814A and 1814B pertaining to conditions for development of triplex and fourplex units. And we have conversed with the city attorney and got readings from the city attorney. Based on that information, we are recommending revising the, all right, the policy, policy 1814, as well as the specific actions, 1814A and B, as noted here in the document. I would be happy to read those if you'd like, we do. Go through those, okay?
Why don't you please?
Okay. Policy 1814, we're recommending replacing the language of the policy with the following. Encourage the long-term maintenance of new residential development. Encourage the long-term maintenance of new residential development. That's, that's the policy statement. And then specific action, 1814A would be replace the language of specific action with the following. Incorporate various techniques in new residential projects to ensure their long-term appearance, maintenance, and viability, including as appropriate, the formation of homeowners associations, onsite management, use of durable construction materials, and use of SEPTED design principles. And then with regard to specific action, 1814B, we're recommending that the specific action be deleted in its entirety.
And 1814B was the prohibition of triplex developments, right?
That, correct. That was the wording of that particular.
So we're eliminating the prohibition. Okay. Define CPTED, please.
Pardon me?
Define it, please.
Well, SEPTED is a, well, that's a good one. I'd love to be able to define that. What it is, is there are law enforcement measures that are used to, thank you, John, I want to do without you, crime prevention to environmental design. So there are techniques used in the design of projects to make that project more, offer more safety features with regard to public safety and law enforcement. And then item number 38, this pertains to comments regarding the commission's desire to instill some type of buffer on the east side of 50th Street West, just west, east of the prison, the state prison. And what staff has done, and I'm just going to go through and kind of highlight some of the, this is quite lengthy, I'll highlight some of the information that we've been able to come up with regarding that area, that essentially what we looked at is the area from 50th Street West over to 45th Street West. And so I'll just go through this real quick, briefly, and describe some of the information we have for you regarding that for you to entertain. Staff conducted field surveys in the area from 45th Street West to 50th Street West and from Avenue I to Avenue J. It's approximately 300 acres. The majority of the land within this area is currently vacant. There's approximately nine rural residential land uses scattered throughout this area. Most appear to be several decades old. Only one existing residence was located within the quarter-mile area west of 47th Street West. In other words, that quarter-mile area that's closest to 250th Street West. The entire area has been subdivided into 173 lots that typically range between one acre and five acres in size. The majority of the one-acre lots are located south of what would be the extension of Lancaster Boulevard. Other than the major roadways which surround the area, there are no improved streets within this area. Over 300 acres comprising, of the 300 acres comprising the area, 80 are currently designated as MR1, modern density residential, 7.1 to 15 dwelling units per acre, and zoned MDR1. And the remaining is under, are under the designation of urban residential, which is single-family, 3 to 6 dwelling units per acre, and is zoned R7,000. The preferred plan proposes redesignating the 40 acres of the MR1 south of Lancaster Boulevard, SGR, that portion of that area along 50th. And if the planning commission wishes to consider establishing a land use buffer in this area, staff suggests that the easterly north-south line of the buffer should be located at either the quarter-mile, 47th Street West. located at either the quarter-mile, 47th Street West, or at the half-mile, 45th Street West. Moreover, Stafford wishes the Commission to be aware that within the quarter-mile east of 50th Street West is an 11.5 acre site, proposes an elementary school site by the Lancaster School District, which I noted earlier. There are also two projects, project proposals for higher density development of single-family, or smaller single-family lot-type developments that have been submitted to the city on sites within the portion of the quarter-mile area currently designated as MR1. Within the half-mile area, there is also an approved tentative tract map for 87 single-family lots. And I've got a graphic that I'll point these various projects out to you in relation. This is the area in question here, that we're referring to, the 300 acres. And this is the portion that is currently designated as for multiple family use. And the remaining is currently designated as, under the, will currently recommend as the preferred plan, is urban residential. The map that's beside that one shows the location of these projects that I was referring to. The school site's located here. You also have this graphic in your package as well, so I know it's kind of hard to see. School site is here, and the two proposals that are within this area here, school site's right here on this graphic, and the two proposals that are located within the multiple family area here are here, and here, they're adjoining each other. And then within the other portion over here, between 45th and 47th, is the location of the tentative tract mapped. I just wanted to bring this information to you, so in your deliberations regarding this area, you would have that information available.
So just so we're clear, west of 47th, there are no active subdivisions, or there are projects being proposed that have not been considered by the Commission, right?
That's correct. The only one, the only one that has received approval is a tentative tract map, which is located here.
East of, east of 47th.
This would be 47th.
I mean, 50th and 47th, there's no active application, or there are no approved projects. There are active applications that will come before the Commission at some time.
That's correct.
Assuming they don't withdraw them.
That's correct.
And a portion, I'm sorry, there's a, there's a, there's a piece of land owned by this Lancaster School District within that as well.
Correct.
There are no utilities, no paved streets, no gas, no water within that area, for the most part. Now, there's this trunk sewer in Avenue I and one in J, I guess. There's nothing north and south on 50th. And besides the prison, there are other correctional facilities there, including a challenger use center, I guess.
Yes.
They call it?
Yes.
And a detention center that's operated by, Miraloma, I guess is what it's called, but it's operated by, what?
INS, I think.
Is it?
Is it INS?
INS, yeah. ICE.
They're using it. I guess that means they're operating it.
Green buses there periodically, right? Yeah. Plus the prison, which encumbers about two-thirds of the 600 acres there. I think part of our discussion was as well, just to be clear, that north of Avenue I, between 50th and 60th, would remain non-urban as well. And that's what the map shows, and I believe, I think that was part of our discussion as well, but, you know. Okay. Well, after the public testimony, we'll deliberate that, I guess, maybe. All right. Any further, any questions on it while we got him? All right.
And then the next bit of information is the, an update to the request summary, a letter summary log. And there's just a couple of items we wanted to point out on this to you, just to show that what has been changed on the log. First of all, we've, in item B4, on page two of the summary of the update, that's been submitted to you tonight, we are reflecting the removal, the Planning Commission recommendation to deny the request for the C designation at this location. And then on B, item B7, we are reflecting the Planning Commission concurrence regarding the changes from, to Office Professional on the north side of J, on the north side from Amal Valley Hospital, and also the expansion of that area to include the assessors parcel numbers, as noted, the additional properties to also re-designate those as Office Professional. So we're reflecting that in the, of the log. I have a graphic that, right here, yes, this graphic shows that particular change. So we're showing that additional area that has been, will be added to the recommendation as Office Professional on our side J. And then under Section C of the request letter summary log, we've added in item C15A, which a letter was submitted to you by LA-DF Investment Fund 8 at your last meeting. Stafford's had a chance to look at this request. This is a request that's located south of Avenue L, in the vicinity of Avenue L and 75th Street, what would be the southern extension of 75th Street West. And the proponent was requesting the addition of a commercial site on the southwest corner of 75th Street West and Avenue L, and also consideration of a mixed-use type development, not mixed-use, but a, an RBD-type development at that location. Stafford is recommending denial for this request, primarily for the reason that 75th Street West at this location, south of Avenue L, does not function as a secondary highway. It functions as a local collector street, it feeds into residential areas, and it's really not appropriate for a commercial site. And we believe the other request, the other portion of the request is premature at this time, so we're recommending denial on that particular request. And those are the changes to the summary log this time around. And then the other other item which I wanted to mention is that we received some comments, general comments on the General Plan Program from the city of Palmdale, and we have included that for your approval. We've also included Stafford responses to those comments, and that's included with the materials that we've given you tonight. And I believe that pretty much covers the materials that we've submitted to you tonight. And so I'm going to go ahead and finish my presentation and turn this back over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Any questions or comments from the members before we ask for public comments? Actually, it's public testimony. Anyone? No? All right. So now it's public testimony on the General Plan Revision. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to comment on the General Plan Revision only. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on the General Plan Revision is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Do we have any speakers?
I have no cards, but I don't know if that means there are no speakers.
I don't know. We'll give it three chances. Once? Third and last call? None? All right? And it's appropriate to close the public testimony section and for the Commission to take up deliberation on what's been presented tonight. And what I'd like to do again is to go back through the binder and discuss if anyone has anything to discuss relative to the previous material provided or anything updated. And we will have to also make some recommendation on the prison buffer, if that's the majority's Anyway, in our tab two is the, the section that was provided to us on March 23rd, and the revisions to the policy document, which were highlighted in a very nice green print. If you've had an opportunity to look at those, and if anyone has any comments on anything or any suggestions or changes. On page four, there's been a lot of discussion about water usage. And the modification on, which actually is page I, I-11, Objective Number Three, eliminates the 200 gallon per day usage, per capita usage to a level consistent with other desert communities, is the way it reads, so. And that's what we had talked about, and that's what Stafford's recommending. On page nine, the second bullet, which is page Roman numeral five dash 14, talks about the heat island effect. I almost guessed what that is, but maybe someone can explain it?
Yeah, it's the, I have limited engineering background, I'll attempt to do that. Heat island effect is basically just the effect you get from, in city development situations where you have a lot of blacktop and cement reflects, absorbs heat, particularly blacktop, and so you get areas that you have increased heat from these sources, and that, you know, you may have a, an overall temperature is much lower, but within these areas, it could be higher because of this effect. And this is offset by, quite often by installation of landscaping, trees, shade trees, so forth. That offsets this so-called heat island effect.
Okay. I'm not sure what sound walls have to do with heat island effect, but that's the way it's written. Maybe it does. Maybe the shading of the walls, maybe that has a, depending on how oriented, I suppose.
It could. I think the way this is written, because it talks about several different things, it's minimizing noise, glare, and heat island effect, and kind of says, well, you know, sound wall screening, I think those are probably designed more to deal with the noise situation, so.
On page 12, item Roman numeral six dash six, Objective 15.1, we've modified it rather than response times for emergency calls for lease protection to fall in line with the city's objective to reduce Part One crime below 300 crimes per thousand. So that's, okay. And then a couple more down on the water facilities and flood control and drainage and waste.
Actually, one moment.
What's that?
Was it per thousand, or is that 10,000?
It says 300 per thousand on the, on here, but I think it's 10,000.
I think it's 10,000. I think we dropped to zero.
I don't know. That's what it said, you know. I'm not a statistician. So it should be, what, per 10,000? And then the wastewater facilities, flood control and drainage, wastewater facilities, water facilities, there's very extensive modifications to the policy document. On the next page, another very extensive section on the Roman numeral seven dash two relative to the municipal revenue, which is quite a change from what we had down before. And then the next page on downtown revitalization, rather extensive as well. And there's been some discussion among the members, if you look at page 17, Roman numerals seven dash 26, ensuring that new development pays for its fair and equitable infrastructure, pay for its fair and equitable infrastructure and public facilities costs. Which is more in line with our environmental reviews and approvals. Notice on page 18, you've included under Roman numeral eight dash three, major land uses, Edwards Air Force Base, Plant 42, Foxfield, Miraloma Detention Center, California State Prison are located in and adjacent to Lancaster General Plan Study Area and present unique land use challenges due to noise, employment, traffic, and other related issues. Which coincides with the Commission's concern relative to a buffer around the prison, I So, anything further from anyone? Nope. The next tab is the addendum to the land use, and our city engineers in here, I don't think, but under number 14, we discussed this the last time. And it was, it was a land use designation change outlined by the landowner in C19A. I think this, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. Wrong one. Anyway, I don't know where it is now. Now, when we get to it, I'd like to take that up. So, under this tab, Addendum to Land Use Alternatives, I guess it would be appropriate then to take up this discussion we had previously relative to the prison buffer. That would fit in that area?
Yes. Yes, it would.
Okay. Okay. And I, if I, my memory serves, last time we talked about, as was outlined by Mr. Ledbetter, a buffer on the east side of the prison and on the north. And they've done their staff report, so if anyone has any compelling recommendation, maybe we ought to talk about it. I said my piece the last time, so. Anyone?
Has the Lancaster School District already purchased the property for the two elementary schools that are within a half a mile of the prison?
Are they within a half a mile or a quarter mile?
Quarter mile. Quarter mile.
One of them is, yeah.
One of them is.
Yeah.
The other one's within half a mile.
I think the other one's further than that, but whatever.
Sitting here listening to the people who are so concerned about a Walmart located across the street from a high school, I can't imagine how concerned they'll be about a elementary school across the street from the prison. Just something that I can't even, I can't imagine my children going to school across the street from the prison.
So what would you all like to do?
I don't know. What would the options be, the lands already purchased?
Well, the reality is, is that the city has no control over the acquisition of school sites or the placement of school sites within its jurisdiction. The school districts have that autonomous authority. The two, the school sites that were mentioned previously are about a mile apart, three quarters or a mile apart, which is typical for site selection when you are considering long-term future growth. And based on the loading of a typical school site, within a square mile of urban residential, you would typically fill a elementary school. You might even overfill it, depending on how deep, how many homes are built and how soon and so forth. But anyway, that's the typical way that school sites are selected. At least it's been my experience since I've selected a lot of them. I did not have anything to do with this site selection, however.
What would the likelihood be if we were to create that buffer zone? I guess we can't read the mind of the Lancaster School District, correct? But what would the likelihood be that they would reconsider building a school in an area where we actually have established a buffer zone?
My personal feeling is that that may not have much bearing on it at all. I have a feeling what would be more relevant to them is whether they would encounter financing or funding difficulties as a result of the location. But as Chairman Vos indicated, if they were bound and determined to move forward with a school on that location, they can exempt themselves from the city's general plan and zoning requirements. There is that provision that they have in state law as an autonomous district.
So to address what Commissioner Haycock's concern was about the comparison between Walmart and the high school and the school district and the prison, that really wouldn't be our challenge to answer, correct?
You could designate the site just about any way you wanted, but if they were determined to move forward with a school on the site, they could do that. And we have history of that within the city at various locations.
Okay, thank you.
Well, in my opinion, if we at least let them know that we're in disagreement with it, maybe they'll listen. If we don't do anything, I think sometimes when you do nothing, that means agreement. So in my opinion, I'm for the buffer zone.
The buffer being defined as non-urban land use, that puts some sort of a land use on it. Now, right, Mr. Ludicki, we have to put some form of a land use.
Yes, you have to allow some economic use of the property. You couldn't zone it as an open space designation, but as a non-urban, ultimately, at some point, there's going to need to be a decision on zoning classification. But obviously, under any of the non-urban zoning designations, there's some amount of development that's allowable in a very low-density residential sense.
And why is it that we can't establish it as open space? This explanation?
You get into the issue of taking of property, as it's called. You have a, under the Constitution of the United States, you can't take private property for public use.
I understand, okay.
So you have to allow some amount of economic development on it. But certainly in a non-urban setting, it's a pretty low-density issue.
By designating the area, say between 50th and 47th, between I and J, as a non-urban general plan land use.
You mean H and I?
No, I and J. Well, H is already there. H to I and I to J. A non-urban use, it would not preclude development, however, there would still be the opportunity to develop single-family dwellings on one acre or sold parcels, depending on how we zone it when we get to that point. Similar to what's already out there. So is that the consensus, a quarter of a mile deep to 47th is non-urban?
Yeah, I agree 100%. I like the idea of the buffer zone. I wish we could have a buffer zone all the way around it, but I think at the point we're at, that's good planning to create where we can now.
We have the, if the consensus is you want it all the way around it, we still could do that. However, the recommendations to the south and to the west, we previously discussed and...
Yes.
So, is that your pleasure? 47th? Everybody okay with that?
It's a little late to do.
What's that?
It's a little late to go all the way around it.
Well.
Right, and I think we talked about that last meeting that we agreed that...
Okay. So is that clear, Mr. Ludicki?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just as a reminder, however, when future projects that are currently on the books and may be applied for prior to the adoption of the general plan by the city council, the commission may still have the opportunity to review applicants within the current land use and zoning designation, right?
Yes, for projects that were filed, they have the right to be considered under the rules that were in effect at the time they filed. Or, you know, if, as you said, the changes haven't actually been adopted, still the rules that are in effect.
All right. All right, thank you then. Let's see. Mr. Ledbetter highlighted a number of changes on the planning commission comments regarding the draft general plan policy document. Did anyone want to discuss any of those? Clear on what the recommendation is relative to the air force impacts and all that on the east side? Okay. Anybody have any burning desires on those? All right.
Well, I'd like to thank the staff for reinstating triplexes and proplexes and my, I was really worried about that. So thank you very much for reconsidering that and reinstating that, the possibility of them being built.
Okay.
Just one note on this particular document. Once following this meeting, we will take the recommendations, as long as you, if they're acceptable to the commission, the ones that we've outlined in here that are not reflected in the addendum to the policy document, we will include those in the update of that, which will be included as the final, hopefully, addendum for your recommendation.
Before we're done tonight, we're going to look at the map again and see if there's anything that anybody wants to talk about.
Right, just referring to the policy document. These are, a lot of these are not reflected in the addendum as yet, but we will put them in after tonight, based on your recommendations tonight.
Okay, tab five is the land use request, and we had one letter, which Mr. Ledbetter talked about, which was C-15A, so everybody agrees with that? In B1, and we discussed this previously, and I'm, when I looked at the land use map and the proposed, whatever they call it, preferred plan alternative, as it relates to B1, I recall a discussion we had regarding eliminating commercial designations on J-30th Street East and J-8, both on the northeast corner and the southeast corner. The southeast corner was about four acres maybe, and the northeast might be, I'm not sure what, 20 or 30 acres on the preferred plan. And my memory said that we had, we talked about eliminating those and in effect moving that land use to 30th and J northwest corner. That's my memory, and I don't know if I'm right or not. Anybody remember?
I remember discussing commercial property that was at J-8 and 30th.
Right.
That is by the school.
Yeah, eliminating that designation.
I don't remember J. Is that what you're thinking of, J-8?
No, the land designation at J-8, eliminating the J-8, commercial designations and in effect shifting a portion of it to the J and 30th location. That's my understanding of what we did. However, the map and the staff recommendations has not reflected that. So if that's our consensus, I want to make sure that that in fact happens in the final recommendation. Northeast and southeast of J-8 and 30th East. Okay. You all right with that, guys?
Yes.
Staff?
Yes.
All right. Okay. And the last, oh, there's two tabs. Last one, six, the only new item we received was memorandum from the planning department regarding correspondence received from the city traffic engineer, the city of Palmdale, excuse me, senior transportation planner from the city of Palmdale Traffic Division relative to some queries. And when I read the memorandum update, it looked like the majority of those were included within the, the suggestions were included within the policy document, right?
That's correct.
All right. And that's all we have. Unless somebody else wants to talk about something? Anything?
I do. In general, I think that the buffer zones are good in light of what happened a few months ago in San Diego and what happened quite recently at Edwards. I think that the buffer zones are good, and it's kind of in our hands to make sure that public safety is definitely a concern when we're looking at zone changes.
Anyone else wish to add anything? So is staff clear on our position, our latest position on the items we discussed?
Yes. One clarification, I want to make sure, going back to the J-8 and 30th Street West question, you're looking at removal of the commercial designations on both the northeast and southeast corners?
Yes.
Going back to single, to urban residential or...
Urban residential, yeah.
Okay, both corners?
I think, I mean, it's, the north, as I recall, northeast corner has a tenured track map on it for, under the urban residential now.
Yes, it does. Southeast corner is kind of looped a little bit by one of the tongue of the high school.
So it's small residential.
I think it's about four acres. The only question I would have is given its layout, a question about whether or not it would be easy to do a single-family residential tract on that site.
Well, maybe you want to come back to us with a further discussion at our next meeting, our last, our meeting when we adopt this thing up?
My suggestion would be this, the planning staff will have a discussion with our traffic engineering division. My concern is making sure that we can get at least one access street that we would need to.
Well, while you're at that, take a look at 20th West and Avenue M Northwest corner. I don't think you can get an access point on it with the setbacks that you require under office professional designation. I think you can develop it, unless you have some cooperation with a neighbor who shared driveways and so forth.
Yeah, possibly.
So, I mean, you may want to look at that one, too.
Okay. Look at both of those.
I mean...
But if it's feasible, going back to J-8 and 30th East, if it's feasible to do a tract layout, we'll take that to urban residential, if that's the consensus of the commission.
I believe it is.
Okay.
Okay, director's announcements, schedule the next general plan hearing for final consideration of the general plan update?
Yes, we've taken a look at some staff availability in May and the length of time that it would take to put together the final information. We would suggest that the commission consider, much as you did this evening, a special meeting following your study session on May the 11th. The reason that that's the suggestion is that, given some of Mr. Ledbetter's time and his expected availability, once you get much past May 11th, that gets difficult. I know from my personal standpoint, I will not be here on the 18th of May. And if the commission is comfortable with the consensus that you've arrived at, I see no reason to delay a meeting until late May if...
So, everyone's availability on that?
I will not be available May 11th. Vacation, Sacramento, I have work.
Second?
Reals?
I'm fine. At what point do we know what we're reviewing in our study session on May 11th? I think that probably has something bearing on it.
Actually, we've got the draft agenda, and my recollection is that it's a pretty limited number of cases. So if you approached it the same way as you did this evening with a 7 o'clock meeting following a 5:30 study session, I think you'll be okay. It does not appear to be nearly as heavy an agenda as you already had earlier this evening.
However, would it be, and I guess the question would be, our study session is typically for the following regular planning commission meeting, and that's all we discuss, we don't discuss anything else. So there would not, the only opportunity to discuss the final recommendation for consideration will be at the 7 o'clock meeting, assuming we agree to set it at that time, right?
That would be correct.
Okay. Other than... Okay. So, everybody good with that?
Yeah. In that case, could we have the information earlier than the Friday before the meeting?
Yes. And that's one reason we looked at taking it to at least the 11th of May, giving enough time for the environmental findings to be completed as well as the information and the resolutions for your consideration.
We'd be most hopeful to have it at least a week in advance.
Okay. By May the 4th then?
Yeah.
We can, if the commission would like, we can go over the documents that we will present, in other words, we name them and tell you what they are to at tonight's meeting, what we'll bring forward at the May 11th meeting, because that would give you a little bit more insight into what will be probably for you at that meeting. Would that help?
Go ahead.
Okay, what we're going to do, what staff is going to work on after this, after tonight's meeting, will be putting together a graphic representation of the Planning Commission's recommendation. That will include the modifications that you suggested, both that, that you concurred on, both at the meeting of the twenty-third and tonight's meeting. We will also bring back to you a revised addendum to the policy document reflecting the items that we talked about tonight, as well as the information that the new information is contained in the comments matrix. We will bring forward to you, there'll be a full staff report on the general plan with a resolution, resolution recommending adoption to the City Council of the certification of the final environmental impact report and adoption of the general plan program, and all the basic attachments that goes along with it. In other words, it will be, that document will reference the map, the policy document, the master environmental assessment, and the program environmental impact report, which are the four documents that will be involved in the recommendation. So that, in a nutshell, is the documentation that we'll bring for you. You will have everything at that meeting that will enable you to make a recommendation for adoption, if you so choose.
I'm just curious if we end up not ready to adopt that that evening, on the eleventh. Are there issues with the calendar in the future of putting it to a future date? Putting us under the gun that evening to make sure we finish it up?
I think that what our intent is to put you in the position to adopt and make the formal recommendation. If there's something that arises between now and then or some issue that, in the Commission's view, necessitates waiting for that, there would be options of continuing the meeting over to a set time, doing it later. Our goal was just to put you in the position to be able to take the vote if you chose to do so that evening. Thinking ahead also, and I don't know what Mr. Ledbetter's availability is during that entire week. I don't know if there's another date or night that week that would work if Commissioner Irvin could be present for that, as opposed to the Monday. The only conflict that I'm aware of immediately is council meeting is on the following night, on May the twelfth.
I will be back in the local area on the fourteenth of May.
Which would be Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
Well, that means you'd be available the night of the fourteenth?
Yes.
Let's do this. Why don't we set the meeting for the Monday? We're not adjourning to it, we're just setting a date. And then take a look at the fourteenth and see if, because not everyone has their calendars here with us, right? And I don't know who can make what. So we've got two dates. We've got the eleventh and the fourteenth, I guess is really what we've got.
Yes. I will also check to see whether there's any conflict, whether the council chambers has been reserved for some other purpose on the fourteenth. Or the eleventh, for that matter.
Also, if we got the information a week in advance, it'd give Jonathan an opportunity to look at it and put together any written response.
I definitely could do that, and I was planning on calling in to the study session, anyway, so...
Yeah, we'd like to have you here if we can, so... All right. So we have two dates, potentially. And maybe the members who don't have their calendars can email Mr. Ludiki and let him know what their availability is, if that's, if they don't know tonight. Okay? All right. Okay, anything further from the Director?
Yes, one additional clarification. I may have missed it. On the two areas, the old Fairgrounds site and the Carter Park site, was there Commission consensus or any decision at this point in regards to those changes?
I didn't hear any objections, so maybe that's consensus. I don't know.
Okay. I'm good with it, I like it. I like it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. On the Commission's agenda, do we, any members have anything they wish to discuss? None? All right. Then we stand adjourned till Monday, April twentieth, at six P.M. in these chambers for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you all.